During the June meeting of the Riley Ferg Board of Managers.
You said adjourned.
Adjourned, oh, excuse me, call the meeting to order. You can tell I've been awake for a while. Okay, so first, I always like to say that pursuant to the Declaration of the President and some of the Minnesota statutes, this meetings can be held in person and public while recognizing that a manager may, based on the advice of a healthcare professional, have a legitimate reason for not attending a meeting in a public place in person. And in such circumstances, may participate in the meeting remotely. So after calling the meeting to order, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Manager Crafton.
Present.
Manager DuVell.
Present.
Manager Cook.
Present.
Manager Ziegler.
Present.
President Pedersen.
Present.
All managers are present.
Thank you. Next, we're on to the approval of the agenda. I'd always like to start by saying we'll limit discussion to 10 minutes per manager per item with a two-minute rebuttal, and we're hoping to adjourn by 10:00. So first, I would seek a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I would like to move to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Banjo Crafton. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
So I have several. First of all, in order to expedite things, I would like to suggest that we consolidate all of the reports into one item for purposes of accepting the reports. And then, after having accepted them, let people make whatever comments or ask any questions regarding the individual reports. And I say that given the fact that the reports will never be changed, and I think it'll keep us to one resolution in that regard as opposed to multiple resolutions. And so that's one change I propose. Second change is to remove item 6E from the consent agenda as well as 6F from the consent agenda. Let me just check to make sure if I didn't have anything else. No, those are my suggested changes, or I should say required changes as far as removing from the consent agenda. Suggested changes is moving all of the reports, including committee reports, et cetera, as one item.
Are there any other suggested changes any other managers have? And you're okay with the changes, so may we have a vote, please, Mr. Smith?
On approval of the agenda, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager DuVell.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, we're on to matters of public interest. Do we have anyone who would like to speak today either on virtually or here in person? Do you see anybody? I do not see anybody. Yes, you would like to speak?
I just want to say that we're representing Minnesota Creekview Town Home Association, and I think we see sixes. So I was wondering if whatever we are here for, is that getting?
So I believe that is item 6E, and we'll be getting to that.
Six up, yeah.
Yes. Yes. So I don't see that there's anybody else, so at that point, we will move forward to the reading and approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8th meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8th meeting as written.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, do we have any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. May we have a vote on the minutes, please?
On approval of the minutes, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager DuVell.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Stayed.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
Okay, so as Manager Cook suggested, he's looking for a resolution to receive the committee reports all at once. We are probably going to look at that after we have the one committee report, which is from the CAC. Is there someone here representing the CAC?
I'm here.
Welcome, Mr. Aller.
Thank you. The CAC met, and eight of its 10 members were present, constituting a quorum. We'd also like to thank Manager DuVell for appearing. We started off the meeting with the Creek Week Trivia Program, which was enjoyed by all. It was very fun and entertaining, as well as educational for all the members. And we thank Liz for conducting that. We then had a board recap, followed by the program project updates, which were by Liz and Eleanor. We went through the Creek Week programs and the different items of community involvement, one of which I'd like to point out was the Passport Program. And if you're looking on the website, you can still get on the website and pull that program. My wife and I went to all those while the mosquitoes are not out after all the rain, and we had a tremendous time doing that and investigating all the different walkways in our watershed district. We then moved on to the CAC business portion, and we started to discuss whether or not we whether or not we should and how we could become involved in groundwater conservation in some way, picking onto some of the existing programs that were out there. And then also, we talked about discussing options and our desire to obtain and whether or not you had a desire to obtain any feedback from us regarding documents or plans that are created either by the watershed as it moves forward in its projects or on the EHAP. We have a meeting scheduled for June 17th. And at that meeting, Rachel Whittington, who is our Minnesota Green Corpse member, she's working with Zach Dickerson in the Soil Health Study for the EHAP program. And so she's going to give a report of the profiling, sampling, and infiltration testing that she's been doing at the different residents. So and in July, we'll also have Andrew Forbes from Fish and Wildlife coming to make a presentation as well. So with that, I'll let you, that enticement, fight over item B, which is who will appear at our next CAC meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments from Mr.? Yes.
So what was the date?
The 17th.
Okay, this is the 20th.
It's on the 20th here because we were discussing, and that's an error that would be corrected at our next meeting. We're hoping to have a walkabout. And so if we do that, that would be on Thursday, the 20th. So that's why the date was there.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you so much for reporting for us. And finally, we need to have a board representative for their June 17th CAC meeting.
I could do it. I've been doing it. Go ahead. Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, Manager Ziegler, confirmed as the board rep. And now we need a motion to adopt 24-037, receiving the committee reports.
Madam President.
Yes.
I move the adoption of Resolution 24-037 with the following amendment that we also at the same time receive the May staff report, the May engineers report, the May regulatory report, reserving opportunity for questions by the managers after having received the reports.
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. That means we need to make a little change to the resolution. So it's got both of things in there. That would be wonderful. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
On Resolution 24-037, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager DuVell.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
I believe that should be Resolution 24-037 as amended with the amendments.
Right.
Correct.
And then in that, if that, in that event, I vote yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, we're on the first item of the consent agenda. Did you want to make some comments? Anybody, any of our managers?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
I have some questions and comments regarding the staff report.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'll be just waiting to pull it up. Actually, I have a few of them. I will try to be efficient. Well, first of all, I wanted to, on page 1, I wanted to commend Administrator Jeffrey for looking into saving us money with regard to our cellular phone expenses. So thank you for doing that. I have the follow-up question having to do with the annual report that's been submitted to Bowser, and is that on our, that's currently on our website? Is that correct?
President Pedersen, managers, that is correct. It was submitted to Bowser, and it is on our website.
Also, there's the item, it's a CAC member guidance document. And so I had a question is, when did we approve expenditure of staff time to prepare that?
President Pedersen, managers, we have staff liaison to the CAC and matters that are necessary for the functioning of the CAC. We do, this is more of an onboarding roles and responsibilities of the CAC, information about the district in general, and state laws that govern it.
Well, let me just comment, I think the, our prior record is your complete, you know, with matters and items where the staff was not to perform any services other than attending the meetings without the approval of the board, and I have no recollection of any change to that. So I'll leave that at that matter maybe for another day.
It's hard to do my job.
Go to the next, next item. As a regulatory program, it has developed a database, GIS map of all permanent stormwater BMPs, et cetera. It seemed to me, I had some recollection, we already have a map or had a map of various BMPs that we've done throughout the district. Is my recollection incorrect?
President Pedersen, managers, we do have a map of our BMPs that were done through our capital projects. This is intended to be a map of all private or other public entity BMPs that have been installed through our regulatory program.
So we don't have, so are we constructing a database from scratch? Then, or are we, and we already have that information, or was it not organized? Can you fill me in?
President Pedersen, managers, that information exists within the MS forefront database, but it is not in a geospatial format, which can be brought into GIS. So we are taking existing data and putting it into, putting it into a geospatial representation.
So more to the point, we're trying to update, put this into a map. Is that, am I correct? That's the principal work we're doing here?
President Pedersen, managers, yes, that is correct.
I wanted to clarify that. I made the statement before, and it doesn't look like this would be the case, but you know, I think it's so prudent for our taxpayers that we try not to reinvent the wheel and that we utilize other information out there. So I would hope before we do too much work on our own that we're contacting other parties, entities that may have this information, that we can import or make it easy for us to import it into GIS map. I just happen to have a client or two that their business basically is GIS mapping of various properties and including data and information regarding that. So I'd just like to make sure that we're not reinventing the wheel. I have a question about the stewardship grant program. Do we, this kind of fits into the prior topic. Do we have a map, a database of the stewardship projects that we've sponsored? So that's kind of question number one.
President Pedersen, managers, at this time, we do not have a geospatial representation of those, although some of them have been put into, on different mapping programs. We do have a, a physical database of paper records of addresses where these have been installed.
Maybe you can refresh my memory here, if I'd heard it before, but do we, do we, is there a follow-up to these grant programs like we would have with any other type of grant? Make sure that whatever the program is, that it continues for whatever period of time was originally contemplated?
President Pedersen, managers, we do do follow-up. We do a closeout at the end of the grant, and we try to get back to visit sites. But it is a labor-intensive staff, so we do not do long-term monitoring of the sites.
Well, just a side comment, it would seem to me if we're going to do this with other grants, we should be doing it with stewardship grant. Last comment I have with respect to these grants, are these one-offs? Do these stewards end up doing any other projects within the, in the district that we know of?
President Pedersen, managers, yes. For instance, the Preserve Association has numerous grants through us. There are, we've had several residents who've come in and started with perhaps a rain guard, and then moved on and did a buffer or a restoration in other areas. So they are not, some of them are definitely one-off, but there are also several grant applicants that will come back to us for several different improvements.
Well, I for one would like us to be able to get, you know, a report, at least annually, so we know what's being done with the stewardship program. And in more detail, just saying that we did five or six or, or whatever, and with some information about follow-up, did they do any more? Et cetera, because I believe by doing this, I mean, these stewardship grants, are they separate and distinct from trying to take the next, the master gardeners?
The master stewards, the water stewards, yes, these are separate from that. Although some of them might overlap, but yeah, it is a separate program.
Okay, going on the next item, my data collection, can you tell me, looking at the, first of all, I thought we had more than one rate event in May, but I could be, could be wrong. But as to the house sampling units, what, what's, where's the middle Lotus Lake tributary? I hate to say it, I live on Lotus Lake, and I don't know what that is or where it comes off of or into.
President Pedersen, managers, this is the, the outlet through the Frontier Trail Association, which is by those two smaller ponds off of Frontier Trail Drains. In fact, it ends up being the city project that came to us last month drains through that system.
Could you then, well, I have the same thing, same issue with the upper Lotus Lake. Could you send me a map of something or, you know, some coordinates so I can have a better handle on where they're located? Would that be possible?
Yes, we could put together a map of, of sampling. We have, we have one. It has not been updated, so yes, we can update that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, at least to you see, are we going to, are we going to be giving a presentation or report regarding the score of the shore work that has been done?
President Pedersen, managers, yes. It has not been scheduled date as of yet. We were going to look at the July, but that obviously with the budget will be quite full. So perhaps in August, we can do that presentation.
Well, I'd be interested especially in this because I think there's some really some things that can be done with shoreline that are significant that would probably appeal to anybody without much cost, including those who'd like to have, you know, grass all the way to the shore. There's some alternatives, so it'll be interesting in seeing that presentation. The next, I see you worked on the searchable library for minutes and meetings. I haven't had a chance to look that out. Can you send me a particular URL for that?
I will look into that and get that sent over to you, yes.
Thank you. And I don't know if that's a specific topic on our website. If not, maybe you could look into considering making that a, a separate topic, similar to, I'm not sure we have a site or location on our website for data requests. If we do, could you send that to me? And if not, we consider putting something specific on our website so people have requests for information.
I'll send you the link, yes, it is on our website.
Be great, thank you. One thing, okay, so we're going to the page six, we do the lake vegetation management. And I was wondering if any post-treatment surveys have been conducted or inspections have been conducted regarding the effectiveness of the treatments that were made?
President Pedersen, managers, some of them have been. We have done some follow-up on the lakes. Staff Max will could talk more specifically to that. Lotus Lake Floridone, one of the things and to note about that is it can be up to 30 days before you start to see results from Floridone because it is a systemic herbicide as opposed to a contact herbicide.
Well, with that regard, I think it's been more than 30 days since Lotus. And I'd ask that you send somebody out to do a survey. I'm not sure it's been effective at all in certain locations. So perhaps you could, and staff could follow up on that. My next item is on item number seven, total maximum daily load. Could you refresh my recollection on what's involved or included in the watershed restoration and protection strategies that wraps?
Yeah, President Pedersen, managers, so these, originally TM deals were done for individual water bodies. The state PCA has moved to looking at watershed-based total maximum daily load projects. So it's really the same process except for done for the watershed, for the entire watershed. So for all of the watershed, for Riley Creek or for others. And those are done by the PCA, so that, that work has been completed through the PCA.
Okay, thank you. Next, I see on the bottom of page seven, a reference to AICP certified planner for some strategic planning. Can you tell me what AICP stands for?
American Institute of Certified Planners.
Okay, I won't make, I won't make any further comments at this time on that. You know, issue of alphabet soup here applies equally to lawyers, of course. That, so I mean, looking at the wetland management, it says, Staff Dickhausen is done with the season's wetland assessments. So is that true? I mean, we've already done this year's assessments for the wetlands.
Manager Pedersen, or President Pedersen, managers, yes, that is true. We only had a few of them left to do. Now he's doing QA and QC on ones that were done before or areas that the floristic quality indices weren't done at that time. So the MinRAM assessments and the FQI are all done. This is different than the wetland assessment that we were developing in-house. It was, it was going to be one part of it. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Border Water and Soil Resources are finishing up their wetland assessments. So we're going to wait for release of that to see if that will be adequate and would no longer then necessitate us moving to phase two of our proposed wetland assessment.
Good, thank you. That's a good idea. Why did you decided to do that? So I have one question, the Wetland Restoration Pioneer and 101 talked about spraying, you know, about grasses, et cetera. Did we not make a considerable expenditure to remove topsoil to try to get rid of noxious plants and weeds? Or was that, was I dreaming that?
President Pedersen, managers, and Engineer Sobek, please step in. Under the permit, nationwide permit through the PCA, we are unable to go in and bulldoze. So all soil manipulation had to be done with a bucket of a hoe dragging back to an area. We did make an effort to remove seed source where we could, but the depth of the organics in that area would have made it very difficult to get all of it. So unfortunately, it necessitates future maintenance. And the establishment of native vegetation anywhere will always require significant maintenance, at least upfront.
So, so we didn't, didn't do this scrape and get rid of soil? Is that what you're saying? We didn't do that?
President Pedersen, managers, we did it in some instances, but not throughout the entire area.
Okay, thank you. Are you, there's two references about trying to get delisting, that's Lake Riley, and what was the other one?
Rice Marsh Lake.
Rice Marsh Lake. Now, if I recall correctly, you're just referring to nutrient criteria. You're not dealing with invasives, is that right?
President Pedersen, managers, that is correct. It is, we're moving it from the 303D impaired waters list, which looks at specific stressors. And in this case, they are both impaired for nutrients.
And so is there an impairment for invasive species?
President Pedersen, managers, no, there is not a recognized impairment under the Clean Water Act for invasive species.
Okay, so just, just about the quality of the water, not necessarily the lake environment other than water quality, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And talking about the Lake Susan spent line. And I bring this up because some concerns I have, we talk about saving wetlands, doing wetlands, et cetera. But it appears that we have a situation where, you know, we've got a wetland that's actually causing water quality problems and issues. And I bring this up only because I think it would behoove us to have a discussion about, you know, wetlands and retention or rebuilding wetlands, but to make sure that doing so is going to be contributing to, you know, another issue of, I always looked as, well, wetlands can be independent, but obviously, when they flow into other water bodies, I think that's a, that's a significant concern. But my point was is that going forward and evaluating whether we should do something with wetlands, make sure that we take into account any impact that, that wetland, good or bad, would have on any other water bodies that possibly be affected by it. So that's the reason I brought that up. And so with Lower Riley Creek, for example, we had one other one. So it appears that the improvement has held over the winter and through the spring. Probably did because we didn't have any snow, but.
Yeah, President Pedersen, managers, but yes, it has held throughout. You know, there are some throughout. You know, there are some areas where we're seeing a little sloughing occurring, where siebs are coming out of the side of the hill. But overall, yes, it is considerably better shape and is is holding up well.
See what happens after this rainy year, huh? What a difference a year makes.
Yes.
Excuse me, manager Cook, you're at 18 minutes.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm almost done with this. Thank you. One other one. And are we still on? You mentioned doing an alum treatment in Lotus Lake. And I'm just wondering if Mr. Bishop and et cetera have taken into account where the treatments are going to be and possible impacts from weight boats. I brought this up, believe, when this issue first came around. So I'd like to make sure that it's given some conscious thought before we spend a lot of money to make sure that we've tried to do a job of minimizing interference with the treatment or downgrading the treatment because of weight boats. And with that, I'm finished. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from any of the other managers? Manager Crafton?
Okay, so share the wetlands committee. So we're going through all the rules to make sure that they align with statute. Evidently, there were 24 new statutes passed this session. So one of the things I brought up at the committee, so they're looking at LGUs and what they're doing with standards, but it seems to me for my question and answer was that is the TAP is going to be determining those standards maybe in a region, but they were saying that, which I didn't realize, that the different standards are specific to certain regions and those plants have to be accordance with the native plants, and it has to be native plants. And it has to be native plants in Minnesota that are in that, in those wetlands. So is that different than what we're looking at?
President Peterson, manager Crafton, no. So yeah, they're looking at the geomorphological approach and the FQI, which is very similar to what we are doing. And that's why we are that's one of the reasons we pumped the brake on it to see if they would do the heavy lifting for us and we come away with something that worked well for us.
As I mentioned, that we've been doing some intensive, our staff have been doing intensive studying of the wetlands and that we've even been able to upwind to from low to medium.
Yep.
And it didn't have any problems with that, obviously. But, okay, and then I'm assuming that that PCA is moving to a watershed perspective with MDL wraps, actually. That's what their tech next 10 years that they'll start with that whole system. Okay, that's all I had.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
On the same topic or go to a different next topic?
So we're on to the May engineers' report. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, the May regulatory report. Any comments or questions?
This man, President?
Yes, manager Cook.
I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, I couldn't tell, you know, they're doing maintenance, I believe it's at Galpin and Lake Lucy Road. I go by there, cross it almost every day. I noticed there's some tracking of dirt, et cetera, onto Lake Lucy Road. I'm not saying it's drastic or dramatic, but I did notice that the silt, whatever you call it, the the sock filled with hay is kind of out of place on the drain downhill, down gradient from that intersection heading east on Lake Lucy Road, and that might, should be looked into. And I'm just wondering, and so I didn't, I couldn't tell where it is on the regulatory report, but I think it probably needs at least a casual look at. They got quite a mess, I'll say, going on there. So that's just one comment. And I noticed that Powers and 78th, I think they were doing some utility work there. I noticed there's one location where again, they don't have that sock or whatever you call those along the bike path there. So with this rain, there's some erosion there, and maybe that needs to be checked out. I assume that sometime this summer that they're going to be filling in all of the gouges, et cetera, that they put into the landscape there. Other than that, it looked like they did a pretty conscientious job trying to put those, whatever you call those silk socks around. And so, but my final comment was, as I asked this question before, I'm not sure I got an answer on it. Is that at late, late last fall or during the winter, even trying to remember now, spent some time. So I think the city must have done some storm sewer work on the south side of Lake Lucy Road. And I don't recall getting a response as to whether or not anybody had received a permit for doing that work. And I wonder if somebody could get back to me later whether or not we had permits and they were closed out for that work. And then let me see. Is there any further update regarding actions on the notice of non-compliance for these permits? I noticed that there was believing in the engineers' report, one item about meeting with the council bar, et cetera, about what to do next. Is there any further updates on that?
President Peterson, managers, there is not at this time. But do you expect to be coming back the board soon with something? You're referring to a procedure for escalation of violations, correct?
Yeah, see, yeah, there's never, we've never gotten any responses, for example, ones that are most concerning to me. And it seems to me we should be coming up with a procedure or process to follow. And we should we should seriously consider adding that to our rules so that, you know, we don't end up being arbitrary and capricious and then end up with a fight with somebody saying, oh, you don't even have any rules or guidance, et cetera. So you can't complain to us. So again, we need to come up with a process and procedure about going forward on these, I think in a more timely manner. And we should be looking at including those in our rules provision so that we have standards, timelines that we go through. And I think that would be good for everybody. So that's the last of my comments on that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the regulatory report from any of the other managers? Hearing none, we are on to item seven, new business items removed from the consent agenda. The first item is permit 2024-018 for Miller Park Outdoor Courts. Do I hear a motion first to accept this permit?
I'd like to make a motion to approve permit 2024-018. And oh, it's just listed twice.
That's it, right. I need a second, if there's a second.
A second.
Thank you. Now, any questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, manager Cook.
Reason I pulled this was my concern. I have to go to the top page five of 10. There's a discussion about, excuse me, as I understand it, you know, the amount of disturbed areas, the fact that, you know, various what the word is, projects get locked together into one for purposes of determining the application of the various rules. But my point was, I was a little my thought process is they kept referring to percentages. And I'm concerned that if you just deal with percentages, you, you could have a huge area being impacted or avoiding our rules, just because it's a quote unquote, small percentage of a bigger area. And I'm wondering if in looking at our rules going forward, we should be having some square footage limitations, a little bit like we have in our other rules about, you know, what is it? 5,000 square feet, 50 cubic yards and, and have some parameters on that area. So that, you know, you don't, you could have one tenth of an area of, of a large area and it'd just be huge. And, and could avoid our regulatory factor. So that's why I pulled this, that I think this, that issue is worth considering under our rules when the rules get looked at. Other than that, I had, I had no comments. Thank you.
President Peterson, managers, just, just for clarification. So our stormwater rules will be triggered whenever there is the 5,000 square feet of disturbance of impervious area. The percentages are used to look at if you have a site and you disturb less than 50% of it, you only need to treat the new or fully reconstructed impervious. If you go over that 50%, then you must treat the entire site. We did look at other ways. But we found we found difficulties in implementing it the other, the other way. We also found it was a bit of a carrot to get people to look at minimizing their impact or their increase in impervious surface.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I just, a brief response?
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's worth re-looking at in this regard, especially if we're dealing with large areas. And thinking of, you know, several sites that are, I guess, up for consideration even tonight. I don't know if they meet those rules. Just I think percentages can be could be taken advantage of. And I'd be interested in hearing the reasons not to do it or what number to come up with. So thank you.
Any other questions from any of the other managers on this particular permit? No? I believe we're ready for a vote.
On permit 24018, manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item is Resolution 24-040, approving the grant for Minnesota Creekview HOA. Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-040, approving the grant.
Second.
Thank you. So any questions or comments from the managers?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes, manager Cook.
I'm sorry, maybe one, one moment here and pull this up. I have to again express why my comments pulled up here. But I same comments I've had before regarding the form and substance of the cost share funding agreement. In particular, again, I apologize. I don't know my market one doesn't come up. Maybe I didn't save it correctly. But I have concerns about and I'm not sure why there's a 10% withhold under item three. I'm not sure why there's a limitation on application of this agreement. Again, I think it should last ad infinitum if somebody has done something wrong. Further with regard to remedies indemnification, we should be, the district should be held harmless from any and all actions other than for its own willful, you know, misconduct. I think that's a pretty standard provision, given the fact that when we're doing grant, all we are is paying out money. So I think this agreement, you know, and the form of agreement, I mentioned this before, this isn't the first time, need to look at and some significant improvement to cover basically the district to make sure that we're well covered. And the last thing I've mentioned, item eight on page three. Have some, I consider, I'll use the word wonky language, you know, saying like the district weighs no immunities and toward. I just think there's a better way to say that. This isn't the first time I've mentioned it. I think it would be appropriate to pull out the representations and you put them in a separate category such as, you know, section 10, or at least refer to the representations and nine in the heading of item nine. Those are, those are my comments.
Any other comments or questions? Manager Crafton?
President Peterson, so I had some concerns here because they're bringing in mulch. Now, we be sure that there aren't jumping worms and things in that mulch that are being introduced into our watershed. And then they say several times that they're not responsible for weed seeds. So I was just concerned about what's coming into the district or what's being used here.
So any response on your part?
I have no response. I mean, it's a common practice within within these projects, and it also helps with erosion. And it's better than plastic or other impervious barriers.
Well, on behalf of the landscape industry, I can at least tell you that most shredded hardwood mulch sits in very large piles. And the heat that gets generated within those piles, because it's almost like a compost pile, is enough to really take care of anything that's alive within the space. So and I know the company that's doing this, and I would feel comfortable that they're, that they're good.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
As a follow-up to that, you know, first of all, I know a lot of things that withstand a lot of heat. First of all, I don't know if there's any types of certifications or testings out there, but I think it would behoove us to at least look at that and see if we want to consider making that a requirement. And my last comment is, I'd be quite frankly, I'm concerned about using mulch, especially creating mulch, which is, you know, degradable, results in more carbon, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide being released, you know, into the atmosphere. And I don't think it's what people think it is. I think it result in as much harm as good on that basis. And I think it's worth looking into the literature and the research to see whether or not there is a better mulch or whether there's issues to worry about. And I think we should get it from, you know, the scientific community. You know, just rather, rather than our, perhaps, I guess, the normal ops, I know the normals, right, are our observations on this. But I do have a concern. People constantly putting this, this material down, which just decreates quickly when it's spread out. And I don't think it's good for the environment. I'm going to assume these are not colored or in any way with any other chemicals, because I know so much is.
They're not.
I believe it specified double shredded hardwood, which is which is not colored. Yes, manager Crafton?
I was in no way putting, I mean, using mulch is a, is a common practice, and I've used it in my yard, and it works very well. I just wanted to make sure since we had heard from Professor, I'm afraid like that it could attract something. So I just wanted, I figured you would know, and that's why I brought it. Thanks. But the practice, I didn't know.
So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, vote please, Mr. Smith.
Resolution 24040, manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
Yes, manager DeVal?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you all. Thank you for attending our meeting, by the way. We're glad you're here. Next item under new business is to accept the April treasurer's report.
And treasurer's report?
Or the May treasurer's report. Mine says April, but okay.
It's May, sorry. It has been reviewed and from compliance with our internal controls and practices. And I would like to submit it for acceptance. Excuse me.
So that's a motion. I'll second the motion to accept the May treasurer's report.
Thank you, managers. Okay, do we have any questions, comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, manager Cook.
So I have a couple of questions and I have a couple of questions and 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 comments here. First of all, I I have a overall comment. I mean, with the. It appears to me, maybe I'm wrong, but the level of usage of the credit card. It has been increasing. I don't have a. A problem with using the credit card. What I do have a problem with is the way it is being. Entered into our accounting system, or at least unless it's changed of late. Entering basically the. Then, or as the credit card companies, I've stated numerous times, is not the appropriate way to. Record these transactions. There is a risk that it can lead to. Fraud and and misstatements. And if it's all put in as exactly as who the actual vendors are, it's much easier to make sure that there are no. Errors, fraud, or otherwise have to do with these. So I. As I've recommended before, I think we need to utilize. Good accounting principles and treat. Acquisitions of credit cards, just like any other acquisition, it was by a check or whatever. We use a check. We don't say it's drawn on US Bank as being the vendor. So there's no reason not to do that. I've also brought up numerous times before. That, you know, and I think it is US Bank itself who started this. They have what we call purchasing cards. Cards which are set up for businesses that will track and record. All of the expenditures, companies like Cargill, et cetera. Use them. They issue them to the employees and they use them. One, you can have. Stops on them that prohibit certain uses, but the most important part is is that. Those transactions end up automatically being entered into Cargill's. Accounting software so that they can track what they're spending, when they're they're spending. So that's one overall. Issue that I I have. Secondly. I was a little surprised to see foreign transaction fees, and I'm always concerned if I see. People buying anything. That from outside of the United States, one because of do we really know? Or trust what we're buying, especially when it's software and making sure that we don't have. Software issues, piracy. Viruses, et cetera. That was my second comment. And then. Go to the. Again, I've said this before, we you go to page one of. One of the first page of the treasurer's report slash check register. I do have an issue. I think our income should be called receipts. And expenses should be disbursements because they're not always income and or. Expenses, but they are in fact receipts or disbursements. That would be a better characterization. Also, I I think that that report should include. Just as you have in the credit card activity report, the account number. For each one of those transactions, so we can see where that when we look at the. Detailed accounting system, we can see where that item shows up. And under what category. In particular, I have a question about we have a listing of Geller Properties LLC. For $500 and it's described as legal expenses. So I'd like to know what that is and. How that is described as. Legal expenses for Geller Properties.
President Peterson, managers. Geller is one of the five properties that abut the Upper Riley Creek. Project that is expense was to help him cover the cost of. The agreement that he signed and entered into.
Well, again, I I don't know that that's, you know, within the general scope of. Of, you know, staff's ability to approve those types of items. And should be before that should be coming back to us. And not just end up showing up in an accounting statement. I don't think that's appropriate way to deal with these types of expenses. May well be approved and fine, but I don't think that process that you described is the appropriate process. For good cash management processes. The next item I have is listed as Hennepin County Treasurer. And what property tax is it on? It's on the office space or what other space?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, that is the taxes on the property on Spring Road.
And. So my question is, if. Is the position that if the district owns it, does the district own? All property taxes, or is there an exception that the district can qualify for?
President Peterson, managers, the contract for deed states that we are responsible for the taxes on the property.
Well, that's not the question. The question is whether or not now there should be an exemption from the property taxes. Because of the situation with the contract for deed. Well, you know, whether that's a valid contract for deed or not is a. Question for another day, but if taking the position that. We possess it, I think we should be looking into whether or not, and I don't know if we are. But generally, property owned. By I would assume the district is tax exempt entity. Oftentimes, property taxes don't apply. I don't claim to know for sure, but it's something worth. Looking at and being informed about, I would think, before we end up paying these taxes. And so I assume you can send me a copy of the provision in the agreement to deals with payment of property taxes.
I I can. You already have that.
Oh, if you could send it to me, please. I don't know if I have the final signed agreement. That'd be great. And then there's the payment to Carol Standell. And says about the real estate purchase and what particular part of the real estate purchase. Costs or expenses does this amount pertain to?
President Peterson, managers, this is the first interest payment that's due quarterly per the contract for deed.
Okay, thank you. And I want to go down to the calls for electronic payments. And it lists may credit card. Two entries. Is there a reason for two entries as opposed to one? Do we have multiple credit cards?
President Peterson, managers, no, that was to pay down the credit card after. Paying for automobile repairs, some data sampling equipment, Creek Week items. Things of that nature.
Were these were these payments based upon a. A credit card statement received in April, or were they for statement received in May?
President Peterson, these are not based upon the statement. They are based upon the alerts that we get from US Bank. About the credit card and where is that with the limit?
That being said, I I question whether or not it's appropriate to have the authority to pay those expenses. Prior to the meeting, and I think that that should be looked into by the Audit Finance Committee. My next is page one of one on the 2024 Budget Status Report through 53124. And the first line item has planned implementation levy, and then it has year to date revenues of $17,000. And. Explain to me what that amount is for.
President Peterson, managers, probably should just say levy. And that year to date revenue is the payment that's been received thus far from colonies on the levy.
Manager Cook, you're at 12 minutes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Other comment I I have concern about, you have. You have revenues and then they have line item past levies. It, you know, when you're looking at the budget. And the past levies is really a deposit, it's reserves, et cetera. It's not revenues. They're certainly not current year revenues. Like you could, if you're going to list it, it all should be. Prior years revenues. Carryovers from prior years so that it more accurately reflects it. My last question has to do with. Item 20 dash 01 there in the left hand column, 10 year management plan. We're at 53.71%. You know, a a rat a basis, we'd be at 41.7%. Is this? Can you generally describe why we're paying this amount of money for the 10 year plan? One, given that it's three or four years off?
President Peterson, managers, as we've discussed in the past, this is paying for the EHA, which is the foundation for the next 10 year plan.
I have, again, the same comment about total revenues and total expenditures last. The two items above the last item, I think we would be better off renaming these amounts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions about the report? Hearing none. Vote please.
On acceptance of the treasurer's report, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Next is to adopt the Resolution 24 dash 039 for approving payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Manager Duvel. Any questions, comments? Carrying none. Mr. Smith.
On payment of the bills, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, so now we're at permit 2023 dash 077, Enclave at Manor Road variance from the Rule J for rate control. This also ties into the next item. If we do not approve Rule J, then my understanding is. That approving the permit would not happen. So I guess we'll start with. Permit 2023 dash 077, Enclave at Manor Ray Road. Engineer Subiak.
President Peterson, managers, what you have before you here tonight is a request for a variance from the rate control. For the enclave at Manor Road development. This is the same project that we discussed at last month's meeting. I'll step through a few slides here, and then we'll get into more in-depth discussion around the variance. It's a 17 acre subdivision. They're taking a lot that's roughly six and a half acres and has one single family home on it. Converting it to 17 lots with stormwater management and preserving about 20% of the area. What I put on the screen here is the same graphic that we showed before. The dark green areas represent natural areas that are going to be preserved. So the trees, the native vegetation, whatever's there is going to be preserved. And that's what they were proposing with their application and and variance request last month. This month coming back, they've changed their design. They've done more analysis, changed their design a little bit, and they're actually. Increasing the amount of natural area being preserved by about a quarter of an acre. So in total, it's a little over 20% of the the area will be preserved in a natural state. In terms of the the variance that they're requesting. They need they need to ask for this variance because of the way the drainage is coming off of the site today compared to the way they want to do it post-development. Under today's condition, most of the runoff drains to the north. Sheet flows off to the north into the adjacent homeowner properties, private residential properties. So it's just. Sort of a gradual sheet flow that flows through the the neighbor's property. Under proposed conditions. That natural area that we were talking about on the last slide will continue to sheet flow off to the north as it does today. But any area that's going to be developed will be collected and routed through a stormwater BMP. And discharged into a storm sewer system. Because they're changing where this discharge is happening, under today's condition, the site does not discharge to the storm sewer. Under proposed conditions, it will. Therefore, it needs a variance. They're changing the discharge location. At last month's meeting, we discussed a very similar variance request. The managers raised some concerns primarily around what the impacts of the variance would be on Purgatory Creek. The discharges into Purgatory Creek, the loss of trees and natural vegetation, and the increased downstream flood risk. So. Try to address some of these, the the concerns right out of the gate here. In terms of inflows to Purgatory Creek, the table at the top of the screen represents. The two 10 and 100 year flow rates getting to Purgatory Creek. Under existing conditions and proposed conditions. I just want to point out that under proposed conditions, the flow rates entering Purgatory Creek will decrease. The next concern that was raised was around the loss of trees and natural area. As we mentioned, they are adding an additional 0.27 acres of natural area that will be preserved, resulting in. 20.5% of the site being preserved in the natural state. That's a couple of changes that are made, bringing back a little bit more information. In terms of their proposed revision that they did by preserving some of that additional area. It did actually reduce the the magnitude of the variance slightly. If you have up here on the screen in terms of the the rates that you see, I did red line strikeout, so it's a little bit more evident. Roughly a tenth of a cubic foot per second reduction in the discharge rates coming off the site. To that storm sewer system. So. We need to also consider what are going to be the impacts offsite if this variance request is granted. We talked a little bit last month about some offsite flood risk increases, and I'll present it here again. On the left side of the screen, I'm showing in the lower portion of that area, the proposed development. The new discharge getting into the storm sewer that is conveyed to the north through a couple of low areas. We also highlight off to the west what we call Low Area 1. That is an existing flood prone area. Their structure is at risk of flooding. The storm sewer from that area works its way to North Manor Road. To Flood Area 6. The homes around Flood Area 6 are currently not identified as at flood, at flood risk. Storm sewer then conveys water and the street conveys water up to Low Area 9. And there are three homes around this area that have been shown to be flood prone. And then from here, the the storm sewer works its way north off the screen towards Purgatory Creek. So with the table, we're able to show what the flood elevations are doing under existing and proposed conditions for. The the three main storm events that we look at, the two year event, the 10 year event, and the 100 year event. Want to point out that at at Low Area 1, the flood risk is actually reduced slightly for the 100 year event. And there's no change for the two or the 10 year event. At Low Area 6, there's a significant decrease in flood risk during that two year event. Little over a foot reduction in the flood elevation. The 10 year event is unchanged. And the 100 year event, there's a tenth of a foot increase in flood risk at that area. This Low Area to the north, Low Area 9, actually shows a reduction in flood risk. For the two 10 and 100 year events. So this morning, the applicant was able to provide me a map showing what that tenth of a foot increase means in terms of a spatial area. Adjacent to these properties. So if we look at Flood Area 6 here, it's it's hard to see. The the purple represents existing conditions. So the the area that's inundated under existing conditions. And with that tenth of a foot, you can see there's a little. And with that tenth of a foot, you can see there's a little sliver of orange around this. That's the increase. One thing I want to really highlight about this that I think is important to consider is the green area represents the public drainage and utility easements that are in place. So under existing conditions and proposed conditions, the flooding is contained within the drainage and utility easements. So the applicant looked at, and I should point out, the applicant is here again in the audience. If there are questions, we can have them come up and help answer some questions. They did look at numerous options, some of which we talked about last month, but we did, I think, a better job summarizing it in the permit report for the managers to digest in advance as well as what we're summarizing here. One of the questions was, that was discussed at length last month, was around reuse of rainwater or rain gardens or tree trenches. And rather than modeling each one of those individually, doing a full design and then modeling it, the applicant took a hypothetical approach and said, well, if this site was able to comply with the volume abstraction criteria, abstract the full one point one inch of runoff from the impervious surface, would that provide us any benefits in terms of reducing that off-site flood risk increase at area six? Through that analysis, they've showed that it was negligible. So that tells us that abstraction of runoff on the site isn't going to solve the flooding problem, that increase in flood risk. And the reason for that is going to be, if you think that the hundred year event is seven point four inches of rainfall, even if you take one point one inches away, you still have over six inches of rain happening. It just inundates and sort of overwhelms that low area six.
This is in a one-week period, right?
It's in a twenty-four hour period. Correct. And there are some other reasons why the reuse system was dismissed. There was concerns about not having enough water to share equitably across the lots that were there. The city was not willing to accept ownership over a reuse system that provided stormwater from public right-of-way into a pond and then discharging it back onto private property. They expressed concerns around that. The rain gardens were dismissed because of the poor soils that out there. You're not going to get any infiltration. You're going to have an underdrain in it. And there was concerns that the homeowners may not be willing to take care of them. Tree trenches, the city would not allow tree trenches or trees to be placed within the boulevards of the streets. So those were the primary volume reduction methods that were considered. They also considered, well, hypothetically, what happens if we just reduce the imperviousness by thirty percent on this site? And that again showed no benefit in terms of mitigating that increased flood risk. They looked at increasing the size of their stormwater pond, their stormwater BMP on the site by four hundred percent, increasing the volume by four hundred percent. That showed no benefit in terms of reducing that flood risk of that tenth of a foot. And then they also looked at what's a fairly innovative stormwater management technique, which is call it operationally intense. It's called the smart stormwater pond. It's where you construct a pond that's capable of holding a certain volume. In this case, it would be that hundred year storm event. And you have a mechanically actuated valve that controls when water can leave this pond. So you would hold the storm until all the downstream flows go through, then you'd open up the valve. Well, that is something that the city, again, is not willing to take ownership of because of the complexity of the system, need for power, and that type of a system, that large footprint would require an additional twenty-two, three trees to be removed. So that's why it was dismissed. The applicant even looked at, well, are there ways here we can just avoid this variance altogether? A couple of things they looked at are showing here in the bottom of the screen where they looked at essentially building a long linear pond or some type of stormwater BMP along that northern property line and then allow the water to rise up and then discharge uniformly out of this basin the way it does today through those neighbors' properties to the north. The challenge with that is if you have a, call it a four to five hundred foot length, it is very challenging to construct something that would discharge uniform flow over it. Any type of small dip, any type of settlement, any crack becomes an area of concentrated flow. That concentrated flow could then lead to erosion problems on the site as well as downstream. So they were dismissed. So with that, I've talked about where we're sitting today, the options they looked at and dismissed. What we have is very similar to last month. If the managers are looking to grant the variance request, there are some things that we could talk about with legal counsel to for the managers to consider, one of which would be indemnification. And then potentially also requiring communicating this risk to the property owners. Are there questions?
I have a couple of questions. So are you using Atlas fourteen in order to calculate this? When you're saying seven point four inches of rain is a hundred year event, what I've heard from climatologists is that's probably outdated amounts. And it's really, in fact, going to be more than that once they've updated it, correct?
President Peterson?
Yes.
The rules require that they use Atlas fourteen.
Right.
Because that is the published information.
Right.
I also hear that future projections that are going to, could be significantly more than the seven point four inches.
I've heard ten inches versus seven. Okay, next question is, you say that if they reduce imperviousness, it has no benefit, but only on that one holding area, six, correct?
Correct. That's where they focus.
So if they would not build seventeen lots or have seventeen lots there, let's just say they only had sixteen and used one of those lots to put in more imperviousness or more pervious space, would this resolve their need to actually ask for a variance?
President Peterson, it would not. The reduction of imperviousness that they looked at would have been, they looked at reducing it thirty percent. So you could say eliminating a third of the lots on the site. And that did not reduce the flood risk increase that they were seeing at that low area six.
But really, in effect, this issue with the fact they're asking for a variance is because there was one house on this entire piece of property, and now there are seventeen lots where there were one house on the piece of property. Is that correct?
President Peterson, the variance request is specifically tied to that they are changing where the water is leaving the site. So it has less to do with the number of homes that are there today versus the number that will be there and more to do with, they're taking it from this uniform discharge to the north and they're focusing it all in that northwest corner where today no stormwater leaves the site. So today's rates are zero, the proposed rates are greater than zero, therefore they need a variance to do that.
Is there any other way that they would be able to do this without asking us for a variance and seeing the possibility of that one area, in fact, flooding in a two-year event with Atlas fourteen numbers?
So the other option that they looked at was rather than developing this long weir, which would be a challenge to maintain and could potentially fail, they looked at taking discharges from their site, putting it in a pipe and discharging it straight north to the existing storm sewer towards flood area six, right, low area six. They also show that by doing that, it does not reduce the flood risk. You still see that tenth of a foot increase in flood risk. But they wouldn't be discharging it to the north along that same property line, so it would reduce the need for that variance. The challenge they have there is the applicant doesn't have the property rights to go onto that private property and install storm sewer.
Any other managers have questions or comments?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Oh, as I stated before, it seems to me that we're not making, with a small exception, or this project is not making anything worse. In fact, it's improving conditions in several respects. This is really dealing with where the water comes off the site. It actually ends up benefiting some of the other homeowners and since we're not with that one little exception, we're not degrading existing condition. And if I understood, Mr. Soubiak correctly, the fact that there's a slight increase is really of no import because it will only affect an area on which there are already what is it, water and utility easements. So it's not going to adversely affect anybody's property. So it seems to me, as I concluded last time, you know, the applicant, based upon how we granted variances in the past, you know, is entitled, or should be granted, you know, this variance. And, you know, every, I don't know that we've ever had a variance request that wasn't the actual result of the applicant doing something on that basis. Maybe there are some of those. But it just seems to me the applicant should do this. We've already, you know, we previously approved permits with the same density number of houses. The problem is you get bad soil, you get bad soil, there's the amount of water, we're not increasing it. So I think we should be approving this variance. But what I'd like to understand is Mr. Soubiak made some comments about I don't know, legal requirements or conditions. What were you talking about or referring to or specifically?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, like to have Counsel Smith weigh in on this?
Madam President, managers, the issue that arises is if there is an increased downstream flood risk. First, the district would, under this scenario, considering this condition, require that the impacted landowners exposed to that increased flood risk be notified of it. And I guess a question I would have is how does that relate to the drainage and utility easement? Maybe the engineer others could clarify that. If all of the increased risk is within an existing drainage and utility easement, that's a different scenario. But then, in the event that there is an increased flood risk, the recommendation would be to have the applicant indemnify the district from any claims arising from that increased flood risk.
Based on that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution set forth in the report under the heading Potential Board Variance Action, that we approve that resolution based on the presentations and the findings with the following exception, that the variance be conditioned upon the applicant providing written indemnification of the district, signed by a representative with authority to bind the applicant from all claims and causes of actions arising from the proposed noncompliance with the purely Purgatory-Buckett leadership district rate control criteria.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion, but I still have a question.
Okay, Manager Duval.
So how would indemnification work ten years from now? If the company isn't in business, for instance?
Madam President, Manager Duval, there is.
Just how would we do that?
There are two ways. One is you could impose that indemnification obligation on all of the seventeen lot owners. And a second way, I guess that's the only way I can really think of to do that.
So would that be something that they would have to work into their contracts when?
It would be recorded on the property.
Recorded on the property, so. Okay, thank you.
Manager Ziegler.
So my question is, if I'm looking at it on your worst-case flood, it looks like it's flooding into the road a little bit. Is that correct?
That's correct. The President Peterson, Manager Ziegler, the flooding area that's shown here on the screen, the purple area, it's cut off where it gets the road. The water spills over sort of a low point there and then hits the road and continues to flow north.
Manager Crafton.
Well, I am having a real problem with this because you've just gone from an eighteen-inch storm sewer pipe and you've taken the load here and you're putting it in a twenty-one-inch pipe. So we are just moving the problem downstream, and I am not comfortable with supporting that. It just it just doesn't seem logical.
Madam Chair.
Are you done, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I don't, well, first of all, I don't think we have, you know, a problem that we're moving downstream. There is somewhat of a rise in potential in that one area, but that's covered by drainage and utility easements, you know, areas. And, you know, my concern ultimately is the creek. And if I understood it correctly, the creek is no worse off with the proposal by the applicant than it is now. And so I think we're doing what we're supposed to do is to watch out for our water resources. And I don't see there's a problem. We proved one area for sure. Maybe increased it for that middle area, whatever it is, six to whatever it is. But if not made it worse or increased it in that top area nine, and that's the one, if I understand correctly, that goes in the creek. And so you know, I don't see an issue. If we got an issue with this, we've got an issue, put it this way, at least an interim issue with the city of Chanhassen not complying with our rules until, you know, some, you know, later date. I just don't see that this is, this is an issue that we worry about and you know, the contractor makes the, or the developer makes the indemnification and you know, businesses go out of business all the time and sometimes that's tough luck, but I think we're going to know if something bad happens here within a short period of time. And we need to make sure is that the district, you know, is held harmless, besides the fact that we do have insurance hopefully. And hopefully the, we could look into the contractor having insurance, but I don't see a reason not to improve this assuming that all the information provided to us is accurate. And to speculate about what's going to happen in the future as far as rain events, et cetera, I don't know. Because, you know, there was just a report that they're expecting in excess of forty days without rain in the Midwest, including our area. So who knows what's going to happen in the future? We can look at last year, we can look at this year. We really don't know. You know, we know maybe there's a trend of rain increasing, but as I said, right now, the scientific community is concerned that we're going to have these huge extended periods of drought. scientific community is concerned that we're going to have these huge uh, extended periods of of drought. And unfortunately, that doesn't make up for excessive water, but we can ask Texas about that, I guess.
Madam President.
Yes.
So I have two more quick comments. Somewhat in agreement with Manager Coke, it seems to me that this development doesn't necessarily change the consequences of something that exceeds what we're planning for. The worst case scenario, if it exceeds the worst case scenario, we're going to have issues right now. So this doesn't change that. So so in that context, it seems like this should be approved. And then secondly, I think it gets fundamentally at at our rules. And we need to look at our rules to develop those and see how they impact and connect with development of the diminishing areas of land for development. So that, I don't know when our current rules were written, but they're probably written at a time where we had more land available yet. So we had, we set up parameters and how to do that. Now that we're getting down to the end where the, we have diminishing property that's available for development, I think we have to think through the rules to deal with how that whole thing interacts. I don't think we can single-handedly change things that go beyond the scope of what we're doing based on our rules. So I I'm in favor of granting this. So I I have one additional question, I guess, for Engineer Sobia. It it's just seems like, is there water going to be running from this area six down the road then? Because it, there's a hill there, right?
President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, under existing conditions, there will be water running down the road. So today, there could be water running down the road with the rain we've had. But under proposed conditions, there will be water running down the road.
No change. So is is the city, they're okay with that? Then, or can we get the city to indemnify us uh, us against this? Because it seems like, I mean, that isn't that one of our charters? We're supposed to prevent flooding, not say, okay, it's already flooding, so we'll just let it flood.
Managers, the the city has been very much involved with the process and and going through this. The city is, I would say, the one who strongly encouraged the developer to replace the existing 18 inch pipe, to go to a 21 inch pipe. Partially because it helps mitigate any adverse impacts in low area one. But it also, by increasing the pipe, provides a slight benefit to low area one.
But it still seems like, uh, you know, if this is, this is a plan the city's approved, right?
I don't know if they've officially approved it.
Okay, well, it seems like that um, you know, if 10 years down the line, if the water's running down the road and people look at it and say, well, the watershed district approved it, you know, how how is that not that not bad? Now, how do we protect ourselves from that?
I have one other comment. You can't really compare this to the City of Chan pro- um, proposal because they're going to have the water reuse system in like within the next year and a half to two years. So this is not the same. I I do understand that we have rules that were put into effect, like Tom said, that were probably put into effect when there was a lot more land and you could distribute whatever waters there were over a larger area. And now we're to this point where we're all just kind of jamming into really small spaces and still having to try to find a way to to deal with the amount of water. What concerns me is I know Atlas 14 isn't going to be what it is today. And I see all these um, things from other countries where suddenly Abu Dhabi gets so much rain, their entire city, you know, freaks out. It's India and areas where everyone got in rain for a long time now, they've got, it's going to be Miami, it's going to be all of that. We're going to get it because that's the way that climate change works. It's large amounts over a short period of time. And I think even though we don't have scientific research today that says how much it's going to be, we all know it's coming.
So uh, one last question for me, I hope. Does the city have any plans to increase the storage area there in area six?
Yeah, good question. The Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, to my knowledge, they do not have any plans on changing the storage in the low area six on or one or nine.
Well, it seems like if they increase the area six, the storage there, that would at least mitigate part of the problem that already exists and and make this a little more palatable. But uh, that would be something the city would have to agree to.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Manager Cook.
I mean, I certainly appreciate your concern for the future, but you you know, we have rules. The rules are the rules. You know, I've been saying this for over a year, that we need to look at our rules, nothing has happened, et cetera. So we're stuck with them. You know, I mean, you know, we're supposed to be a country of laws and rules, and we have to deal with the ones that we have, not the ones that we wish we would have uh, on on that basis. We're going to get indemnification. You know, the the problem with the road is the problem with the road, and that's seems to me to be potentially Eden Prairie's, uh, you know, issue. But if we get indemnification, I think that's the best we can do. And otherwise, I I see no solution uh, other than non-development. And I think that's a, that's a no starter because I think all the data we've given has shown that um, you know, it's not going to make things materially worse. I mean, it's one tenth of a foot, right? So that's 1.2 inches. So I don't think 1.2 inches is going to make that difference that would justify denying the request for the for the variance. And you know, we, I mean, you talked about Chanhassen. I mean, we specifically, if I recall correctly, agreed that there's supposed to be, I don't know if it's in this proposal here that we're going to be looking at tonight, but it'd be supposed to be indemnified, people are going to be notified, uh, et cetera. They talked about the land conditions, the water couldn't go from, because it's all clay, going from one place to basements, et cetera. So um, there are some similarities, you know, based upon the land conditions, et cetera, and indemnification provision. So again, I thought last I have to say, and I I hope we move this to a call to question.
Yes, Manager Crafton.
So why are we asking for indemnification?
Madam President, Manager Crafton, uh, the idea is that if in fact the variance results in an increased flood risk at this increased area around low area six, uh, and those particular two parcels there that would be affected by that, that we would, uh, in approving that, want the applicant to indemnify the district from any claims relating to that. And I also suggested that the applicant be required to submit evidence that they've informed those, the owners of those two parcels adjacent to here, low area six.
So if we're asking for indemnification, it seems to me we're aware there's a risk. And so we're passing something that that there's probable cause of risk, or we wouldn't be asking for this. So I'm concerned about the people that might be buying this too, at the same time, that.
Can we be heard? I apologize for that. I would like to be able to be heard on this, if possible.
Uh, is the rest of the board okay with that?
Sure.
Yes, okay, yes.
Stand up here. Thank you. Um, my name is Anton Cheskes, I'm with Humor and Tara Ganeschus, and I represent Brandle Anderson, who's the developer here and the applicant. And I I would highly encourage you to ask your lawyer to just what the legal standard is for a variance. Because I I think what I'm hearing from from uh, the managers, or some of them anyways, is an analysis based on historical undue hardship standard, uh, which is no longer the law. You know, your your job is to evaluate whether there's practical difficulties for this owner in using their property in a reasonable manner um, that is allowed by the zoning ordinance, which this is, um, and that they did not create their own plight um, in regarding this property and the surrounding properties around it. Developing the property as the zoning code allows is not creating their own plight. The reason they need this variance is because the city does not want the water to flow north. City wants it to flow to the west. And the city encouraged them to put in that 21 inch pipe. And as we've already discussed, if if granted, the variance will not alter the essential characteristics of the locale. That's the standard. And if 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 they meet that standard, um, the variance should be granted. And um, we appreciate the comments from the last meeting. We took those comments, went to the city, went to the engineers, took another crack at this. Um, and we think this is the best we can do. So if the answer is still no, um, that essentially isn't akin to an inverse condemnation. Um, because then you're just telling us, even though the zoning code says so, you can't develop this property. So we we appreciate the comments, but I I want you to, if at all possible, really focus on what the legal standard is here for a variance and not what it was back before 2011, when uh, the Minnesota Supreme Court weighed in on it. So um, and if there's any other questions, or engineers here as well, um, we'd be happy to answer any of them directly.
Got any questions? Anybody have questions?
Well, I guess I'm not sure who my question's for. I I was thinking more Engineer Sobia, but it seems like, um, you know, if we grant this variance, our staff and our engineer and possibly the applicant as well should sit down with the city and ask about that low area six. And could that be increased now rather than later? So that you don't have a stormwater retention area overflowing into the road, you know, due to a a rain event that's bigger than, you know, what's happened so far. I, you know, it just seems like um, water runs down the road all the time, but it runs to a drain and it goes into the drain. And the drains don't overflow. Otherwise, you know, cars would be driving through water and it just doesn't seem safe.
And I, thank you, um, Manager, for that question. I I think that if you look at the model, um, in a two-year event, we're reducing the possibility of that road flooding. In a 10-year event, we're making no change to um, the possibility of that road flooding near low area six. The only possible effect is in a 100-year event um, in that, in that area down here on this, in this little red area here that is depicted on that map. That that's the only negative potential impact is 100-year event um, in area six. But again, the the question, the legal analysis is not, can you do it any other way? The legal analysis is, are you proposing a reasonable use um, that you didn't, you know, based on a plight you didn't create? And I, we absolutely are.
So it still seems, Scott, I don't know if, it just seems like the city should see this as being a potential issue for them, and why not fix it? I mean, if they're going to be making the drain pipe bigger on the, that's the other side of the, of the development, isn't on this particular road, this is where it drains too. But anyway, it seems like uh, you know, they should have the foresight to see that this is not making that particular storage area better in the 100-year event. It's only an inch higher flooding, or you know, a tenth of a foot higher, but it's still flooding into the road either way. So kind of putting the variance uh, aside for a second, this seems like a problem that um, needs fixing before we add to, you know.
President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, um, this is something that uh, I haven't had that direct conversation with the city about, can you increase the size of this? Can you change the configuration? But we have talked about the idea of of potentially doing something. It isn't on the city's radar right now. It's a question that I can absolutely ask them again, um, sort of put it forefront in their mind.
Okay.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Well, again, I I, you know, I'm not not sure I totally uh, agree with the, you know, the applicant's, you know, position, you know, vis a vis the the law on that basis. But that being aside, I mean, we're, we're simply making a decision with respect to our rules. I think the point is, is we don't have to have any rules as long as we grant a variance, you know, with, I think, under reasonable circumstances based upon reasonable information. You know, I doubt that we have much liability, and I don't think we're in a position, I don't think one of the conditions for us approving the variance is that the city of Eden Prairie do something. Maybe they should, but again, I mean, how much money are you going to spend for an inch or 1.2 inches? But I just don't think that's in our bailiwick. We're not making it worse for the creek. And uh, you know, and apparently, we're not making it worse for those two houses because of the drainage and utilities. But so I don't know why we aren't, you know, granting, you know, this variance.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we're, yes.
Uh, Matt with Brandle Anderson. So just one quick follow-up to uh, Manager Ziegler. We do have city approval um, from the city of Eden Prairie. Uh, we received that early May, and so we have the development contract in hand. Just want to share that information. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There are none, sounds like we're up for a vote.
Madam President, just a clarifying question. I want to make sure that the motion included the uh, evidence of informing the two property owners at low area six.
And indemnification.
And the, well, and the indemnification, Manager Cook, I was clear about that. But the informing the two landowners is a question for both the mover and seconder.
You know, I think it would be fine to add that, considering we made that, I believe, a condition for the city of Chanhassen to consider. So I'll amend my motion uh, to include notification of the landowners.
I'd like to also amend uh, my my motion or my second, but uh, I'd also like to make a motion to include a discussion with the city, a second discussion with the city, just so we're all on the same page, that water is going to be running down the road under a 100-year uh, rain event, overflowing from the stormwater retention and running down the road.
Madam President.
Yes.
Procedurally, I understand, Manager Ziegler, to uh, agree in unanimous consent, the motion's amended to add the notification to the landowners. And now, Manager Ziegler, you're making a motion to amend the motion to add a request that the applicant and the district have a further discussion with the city about the uh, uh, stormwater conditions under the developed condition. Is that to capture?
Sure. In the low area six, uh, water discharging to the road under a 100-year event.
So, Manager Cook, are you amenable to the uh, the change to the motion that Manager Ziegler is proposing?
No, I'm not, because I, I don't think it's going to advance the ball. I think it's beyond our purview in in this case. So no, I'm not. Because I don't know what's going to come of it. I mean, we're approving it, I I don't know what good it does. It's nothing wrong with having a discussion, but you you know, this is just muddying up the issue. Are we approving this variance or not? That's my point. I mean, I don't have a problem having discussions. I think that should be, I mean, if if it's phrased in such that, you know, we'll have a discussion with Eden Prairie, that's fine, but there should be no confusion that it does, that it in any way undermines or negates the approval. be no confusion that it does, that it in any way undermines or negates the approval of the variance.
Okay, at, at that point then, this is a sec, a separate motion. Would you like to make that as a separate motion?
I think I did make it as a separate motion.
Madam President, it could.
But there was no second yet.
Yeah, it, procedurally, Manager Ziegler is moving to amend the motion that's on the, before the body, and it would await a second. It is also procedurally possible that you could just act on the variance motion and then bring up a second motion simply to request that there be a further discussion with the city. But, so you could do it either way.
Well, I would like to second the amendment that uh, Manager Ziegler has proposed. And that would be an amendment to the motion as a whole. Yes, Manager Crafton?
My comment is, I think we ought to have the discussion with the city before we do this. Period.
President Pedersen, Managers.
Yes, yes.
So, you'll recall that we did a uh, high-resolution flood risk map with the city of Eden Prairie. The second phase of that is to look at these flood-prone areas and start to develop mitigation plans for them. So, I understand what it is you're trying to do. I think we will be doing that anyway, just not as part of this immediate project.
Does that change your?
Well, it still seems like that the conversation should take place, but I don't disagree with Manager Cook. I mean, it isn't really part of proving the variance. It just seems like uh, good practice to point out, hey, this is a problem. It's going to be worse. It's going to continue to get worse until uh, something's done. Um, and this project is only going to make it worse sooner.
So would you be amenable to having your motion be a separate motion?
Yes.
And then I would be amenable to seconding that as a separate motion.
I, I'm happy as long as Scott tells me he can talk to the city, you know.
How it comes is fine, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
President Pedersen, Managers, we will meet with Patrick Segura, the Water Resources Engineer for the city of Eden Prairie to discuss.
So we have two separate motions now?
No, I withdraw my motion. I said motion to amend.
Okay, so you want it as a separate motion? Cause I'll.
Oh, I just withdraw it entirely. He says he's going to talk to the city. I believe it.
Okay. 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 Any other comments before we vote on this?
On the amendment?
Uh, uh, well, we've withdrawn the amendment.
Right, right.
The original amendment.
The original motion.
The original motion.
Approve the variance.
Right.
Including the contacting of the property owners and indemnification.
Okay, okay. Mr. Smith.
On that motion, Manager Crafton.
No.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
No.
Motion carries three to two.
All right, we're on to approve permit twenty twenty-three dash zero seven seven, which is their permit. And I believe that since we've worked on the first permit, we probably need to do the second one. So do I have a motion to approve permit twenty twenty-three dash zero seven seven, um, enclave at Manor Road uh, for the permit?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Smith.
On permit twenty twenty-three zero seven seven, Manager Crafton.
No.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay, so that leads us into item F, which is to consider permit twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty, uh, twenty-three on the Chanhassen Civic Campus. Uh, I'm assuming this would be Engineer Sobiac, or would it be representatives from the city?
President Pedersen, Managers, uh, Clark Lor, and then representatives from the city are here. If we'd like to maybe take the same approach as last time.
Come on up and join us, please. Welcome back, gentlemen.
With that, I'll turn it over to Engineer Sobiac to give you a little background before discussing.
Managers, the city of Chanhassen has submitted an application to essentially redo a significant portion of their civic campus. It involved the uh, teardown and, and building a new city hall with some underground parking. There would be a, a changes to the, the parking that's there today would all be reconfigured. Uh, of course, utilities, uh, there's community site improvements for in terms of the park. There's a park pavilion. And they're looking at doing some storm water management on the site in terms of a, a small infiltration basin in the northeast corner and two biofiltration basins on the site. And then utilizing the off-site reuse system that we talked about last month in conjunction with uh, another city of Chanhassen project for the Chanview Street Reconstruction Project. So in general, um, high level, they're generally in compliance with the criteria with the exception of the low floor criteria for the low floor elevation, which is represented by the underground parking at the new city hall. Um, the compliance summary I have here, there, you'll notice there's some comments with some typical conditions that we recommend the managers approve. Um, but rather than getting into that, I think we'll just get right into the variance request. Um, again, the variance criteria, uh, rather than going through those in detail, we'll just jump right in. So the applicant is proposing, I mentioned, two biofiltration basins on the site. The proposed city hall is located down in the, be the southeast corner of the site. Right now, it's actually located more in that northwest corner. Um, so with the, the new facility with underground parking, there's this biofiltration basin that they're proposing that's about forty feet away from the structure itself. Uh, the basin is proposed to be lined similar to what they had proposed for the Chanview area. So what this means, lot of information here. I pulled together a, a graphic that I think might help explain things a little bit. We've got the stormwater BMP that sits over here, the biofiltration basin that's lined. It has a hundred-year flood elevation of nine eighty point one. The low floor elevation, which is the underground parking, is nine seventy point eight. So there's no freeboard provided. So then there's an alternative path through the rule that allows them to look at, well, if water's going to sit here in this biofiltration basin, if the outlet gets plugged, worst-case condition, would that impact groundwater and cause groundwater mounting to come up and impact the structure? The seasonally high groundwater in one of the bourings that was collected in this area shows the groundwater at elevation nine seventy-one point eight. So it's already above the proposed parking low floor. The applicant recognized that and they're already proposing to floodproof the building and provide drain tile around the building so that groundwater isn't going to be a problem for them. They're also proposing to line the stormwater BMP so that water isn't infiltrating, making groundwater conditions any worse than what's there today. So in short, they're not providing the freeboard straight up to the hundred-year. They're not able to get through using this alternative compliance route, looking at separation to groundwater. So they're asking for variance. Um, if we look at what this means, the, the project isn't going to have off-site adverse impacts because they're meeting rate control. So they're not increasing flood risk off-site. This really is only impacting the city's proposed building. Um, in talking with uh, Mr. Seidel earlier today, if I'm understanding correctly, that underground parking is primarily for uh, staff, not really open for public to get, to use. So what, what have they done to help mitigate the, the variance? Well, they're looking at lining the basin with a high-density polyethylene membrane. So you can think of it like a plastic membrane underneath the basin. They've got drain tile around the building. They're floodproofing the building. They're providing overflows from this basin, that direct water away from the structure and in, in towards the storm sewer or through a parking lot. So surface flow is not going to come into the building either. And then if we go back to the, the drawing, the, the habitable part, right, where people are going to be working, public's going to be coming in, is actually at an elevation that is two feet above the hundred-year elevation of the, the stormwater BMP. So from that sense, the public is, is not at risk. Um, the practical difficulty is created by the placement of this stormwater BMP and, and the seasonally high groundwater that's been observed. So in summary, the lack of freeboard and separation of groundwater for the proposed building on the site does not present an increased material risk to downstream properties or water resources. If the managers grant the variance request, uh, similar to the last discussion, we're recommending uh, further discussion, condition, I'm working with legal counsel, uh, potentially going and requesting that the city indemnify the watershed district. That, are there questions?
So I got one quick question.
Hold on a second, Manager Cook.
Yes, go ahead.
Manager Ziegler.
Um, the question I have is, so the drain tile around the, the uh, low-ground garage, does that drain into the storm sewer then, or is it pumped up into somewhere else?
President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, I would ask the applicant to address that.
Yeah, the, the, the drain tile is below um, an outlet for the storm sewer. So it will be pumped to the roof trains and then by down.
Excuse me, I couldn't understand that. Could you repeat that?
Thank you.
Yes, uh, the drain tile is below available storm sewer. So there will be a pump that will discharge uh, and connect with the roof trains and tied to the storm sewer system.
Oh, Madam Chair, everyone, everyone, I can't.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Manager Cook.
Well, you know, I have a, a significant, uh, I guess, issue here is that my understanding is we don't let anybody build anything. We made one slight exception, I think, for houses because of play, et cetera, but building below uh, you know, the groundwater level. I mean, normally we require at least some elevation over that. I'm not sure why we should agree to that. I mean, we're only dealing with a foot. Uh, I can't believe that raising the building by at least one foot, uh, you know, would be an issue. I'm sure the architects are plenty clever enough uh, to work that into, in the uh, design. And I think we have to worry about uh, some precedents we may be setting by granting such uh, a variance. Um, I'm also significantly concerned about pumping up, uh, pumping water uh, up. And I believe most people cannot pump their, their, their storm water into the storm water system. And if I'm correct, why would we be having the city do what we prohibit other homeowners, et cetera, from doing? I mean, if I'm wrong, please, you know, please correct me, but it seemed to me at a minimum, we should be, you know, raising that floor level by at least uh, the foot. And I can't believe that it would make that much difference, um, you know, in the site work, site prep, you know, site, site design. So I, I have those, I have those issues because I think it goes beyond uh, just the city's property. And let's face it, something goes wrong, falls back on the city taxpayer. So I think the city should be bound by the same kind of rules that we would apply to uh, you know, other property owners, developers, et cetera. Now, if there's some other exception that applies to other property owners, uh, you know, I'm, I'm ready to listen, but um, I don't think we should be making an exception for the city that doesn't apply to others. So I'm willing to, to listen. And certainly we want to have the, uh, the indemnification. And I think we'd want, uh, you know, the city being the city, you know, to make sure that they have adequate insurance in case, you know, the people are, you know, if floods or whatever it is, people sue because their, their cars are damaged. I don't know if any of you were around back in, when was it, eighty-seven or whatever it is, and we had that gigantic storm that flooded a number of uh, underground garages of various business uh, businesses. And uh, I think we want to make sure that we don't do this if we don't have to. So that's my view. We, this, this should at a minimum be at that, you know, that one-foot increase level. And again, I'm not so sure it shouldn't be the same requirements as we impose for any other piece of property. I, I yield back.
Any other questions or comments from the managers?
President?
Yes.
So was that considered at all in your, in your design, Manager Cook is talking about?
I don't have a, appropriate response. I, I, the, the building elevation was set in a manner that was very challenging with the slopes of the site. There is about twelve feet of elevation difference from, you know, the north side of the site to the south side of the site. And to get the garage door access into the building and to get down into it, it was a very tricky exercise. Um, unfortunately, that seasonal groundwater elevation does exist at that boring. Um, however, if you look at the other bourings, they're all relative to the terrain of the site. So there's like a lens that kind of goes down the slope. And all that groundwater that's kind of perched, kind of looks like it just kind of steps down, steps down. As all of Chanhassen goes further south, I anticipate if there are more bourings, you would see that there are parts that are well below the lower level. It's, it's a challenging situation, no doubt.
Yes.
Madam President, Board Managers, something else to clear up a few things is let's think of this like the basement of any typical home in Chanhassen or Eden Prairie. It's a lot of clay soils, right? Ninety-five percent of them have sump pumps. These sump pumps are pumped up, out onto the land, get in the street, get in the pipes and go. That's all we're talking about here, is this drain tile is our basement. It's a sump pump. I think one of the, Manager Cook mentioned, we don't allow people to pump. I think what he's referring to is we don't allow I and I, we don't allow people to pump groundwater into the sanitary sewer. That is a big no-no. And we, we stop when we know about that. That's a big no-no. This is nothing to do with sanitary sewer. It's, it's going to storm sewer. And it's like the basement of any house that you'll find in Chanhassen that has a sump pump. So nobody designs elevations of homes to make them not have sump pumps. That would be technically and feasibly impossible.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Manager Crafton.
So has this gone to the city yet? Last time we talked to you, you, you were hoping to get it approved, but I didn't know where we were on that.
Madam President, um, Board Managers, yes. The contracts um, for what we call Bid PAC two, which is really the building and some of the bigger work, uh, was approved at uh, last council meeting. Um, so we've, we've got some fence up. We've got our contractor trailer onsite already. And uh, we're just looking for this permit.
Madam Chair.
Uh, excuse me, uh, District Administrator Jeffrey would like to comment.
Sure.
I just want one quick comment. Um, there have been precedents for this before. Southwest Station um, had the same situation.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Yeah, so and, and again, I'm a little confused. Can you go back to that elevation slide that Mr. Sobiac had? So, explain that to me again. I mean, it's this below, I mean, we talk about freeboard, right? In, in when we're dealing with these houses and developments. So it is freeboarding, applying, am I applying the wrong concept to this? And if it does, how does it apply to this?
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, there are two, there are two avenues through the, the reg- President Peterson, Manager Cook, uh, there are two, there are two avenues through the the regulatory program in terms of low floor. Um, one is is what we refer to as freeboard analysis, where you want the hundred year elevation to be at least two feet lower than the low floor. So here, the hundred year elevation is significantly higher than the low floor elevation. That's the first path through. The second path through is looking at, can the surface water get into the structure? The answer to that is no, then you look at groundwater mounding. And we want to know if the water table would potentially mound up to a point that it would start to trickle into the this lower level. So that's what we're talking about, the low floor analysis, we're looking at what is the separation to groundwater? And is it allowable, will it mound up with additional water coming in from the BMP or not? In this instance, the groundwater will likely not mound because they're proposing to line the basin. But the challenge is that, and we've talked about it, is the the groundwater is already that one foot higher than the proposed low floor.
Okay, so I I I so, I mean, I just, I don't see why we wouldn't increase it by a minimum of the one foot. And uh, at least, uh, you know, even though we don't have two feet freeboard, whatever, of from whatever direction, we're at least equal. And I would suggest that, uh, you know, the city go back and talk to the architects and designers and uh, and eliminate, you know, that one foot, uh, that one foot difference. I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe in digging holes in water, put it that way. And uh, uh, there's enough problems with that, and I'm I'm I I used, I used to work in a business that dealt with foundations, I don't know what you're going to do. I assume you probably got radon issues, you probably got gravel all the way through there. I assume you're going to have external and internal sump pumping, uh, you know. I don't know if you are, but you know, it certainly would be something to consider. Uh, I know plenty of apartment building, garages that even supposedly if they're built code have water issues. So this is a concern, even if it had all the requisite freeboard. And it just, uh, it makes it a significant issue. And these are taxpayers' money poured into this thing, it's going to be taxpayers' money to to fix these issues, you know? And uh, I don't, I think we should minimize, you know, that risk. And I think the least we should be doing is raising that to the seasonally high groundwater level.
Any other questions or?
Any other questions or comments from any, yes, Manager Crafton.
I'm, so I'm comfortable, I think they've done due diligence in trying to figure out a way to floodproof it as well as use the drain tile. So I'm I'm comfortable that they're, they're doing what, they've taken a different, the different path. And that that's, they've found a way to mitigate it, so I just.
So is that a motion that you would move that we would allow permit twenty twenty four dash zero two V for the variance?
Like just so moved it.
Yes, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
I I mean, I have to express my concern, Manager Crafton, uh, i- you know, issues with the uh, you know, with the prior uh, variance, uh, when what what doesn't pose any, any problem to the houses? And here we have a situation where we're not meeting our rules, potentially causes a direct problem, you know, to the very building that's being built. And I have an issue with those kinds of standards. And I just can't see approving, uh, you know, basically, in my opinion, applying a different standard to this uh, to this site when it's easily remediated. So I'm, I I yield.
Any other questions? Yes.
So with reference to, I think somebody made a reference to basements and subpumps. So when person's building a new house and they go for a permit and the basement is specked out, is it above the the seasonably high, seasonal high ground table water normally or not? Does anybody know? I'm I'm trying to.
So Manager Duval, yeah, some are, some are, especially depending on the the era in which the house was built.
A newer house, if somebody were going in to build a house today and we went through this analysis, would we approve this?
President Peterson, Manager Duval, um, if somebody was building an individual house, we would never have had this analysis, so we'd never have seen it.
Okay.
Um, so.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yeah.
Managers. This is in front of us because of the little BMP out in the site. If that BMP wasn't there, the same conditions would exist and this would not need approval. When, when people build a house or a building or anything, the the BMP, the external thing on the surface is what's triggering all these rules and what you design around at the elevation of of your home. When, when a builder's building your home, they're going to say, do you want us to put in drain tile on a sump pump? Because you might have some high groundwater, the answer is probably yes, and everybody does. But it doesn't not get permitted because of that, there's not a rule that says you can't do that.
Did you have another comment?
Yeah, thank you, President Peterson, I just wanted to uh, add a little bit of context on why the city of Chan Hassen elected to make this choice to keep this BMP in the in the project plans. Uh, strictly speaking, to to meet our rules, it's it's really not needed. But the city of Chan Hassen looked at the pros and cons of having this BMP on the civic campus site and decided to keep it. Um, there's a tangible water quality benefit. And again, weighed against the risk with all the engineering that was done by the STAN Tech team to, you know, reduce and eliminate those risks, um, is something that, you know, we are confident in installing and maintaining. Um, there's also these kind of intangible things when you have a stormwater rain garden right next to your civic campus. So one would be optics, right? Like the city of Chan Hassen, we we care about water quality, we're trying to lead by example. And that's, part of that example is building stormwater infrastructure in your backyard so that you can show the residents when they come to visit that you care about water quality because it's it's there, right, and they can see it. The other really big component and the one that I'm most excited about is the educational component of this, right? We've got a school in our backyard, there's, there's going to be kids there that want to learn about stormwater and stormwater infrastructure. And having a rain garden that they can go and visit and learn about it and touch it and feel it is re- I think really going to be a powerful message. So in part of the civic campus build out, there was always a discussion of making the this regional treatment facility that we're constructing a focal point to education, right? And so that's a sign interactive stormwater treatment tour that we plan on implementing with this project. So for all these reasons is why we're here today, um, to ask for this variance. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood why we're here. And maybe also to say sorry because I was the one that advocated so hard to keep this in the plans. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll release that back to.
Thank you for the comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I I need to go back by statement, I'm sorry, I I don't know the name of the gentleman who spoke. So I want to, I want to get this down straight and maybe hear from Mr. Sobiak and maybe Administrator Jeffrey. So if there wasn't this BMP, we wouldn't need a variance?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, that's correct.
So we don't have a rule that requires uh, freeboard?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, we we have a rule that requires freeboard from the high water level of a stormwater management facility or a natural water basin. There's nothing in the rule that relates to groundwater.
So if I, we we have no rule having to do with groundwater. So we could stick a basement and the groundwater could be, you know, the entire depth of the basement. That's what we allow?
Good. Yes, correct.
That's correct.
Well, then we have a real problem with our rules.
Yeah.
We have a real problem with the rules, in other words, we're building swimming pools or allowing people to build swimming pools, is that right? Effectively in their house, one crack and they have a swimming or could have a swimming. And this goes back to this issue about our rules, we haven't thought them through. Needless to say, I don't know why we would, it uh, the bottom line is makes me uh, maybe I'm just too stupid and I didn't understand what you've been saying for all these years about freeboard. And I I personally think that I've been misled about those requirements, et cetera. And I quite frankly still think we shouldn't be building this below basically the seasonally high groundwater. But I I think we all need to rethink those rules. Okay, and what they mean and how they're being presented to us and the requirements. Right, because I may not be the smartest turnip around, uh, but I don't think I'm the stupidest turnip around. And and this disappoints me, this discussion disappoints me greatly. So I'll yield back.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we go to the vote? None, yes.
Madam President, I just want to clarify again that the motion includes the indemnification language at the end of the engineer's report. Okay, on approval of variance number one for a low floor elevation, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Uh, and now we move to permit twenty twenty four zero two three, which is the actual permit.
Madam President, we have another variance.
Okay, we do have another, we have another variance.
President Peterson, Manager.
Sorry about that.
The second variance that the city is is requesting, um, similar to what we discussed last month with the Chan View project. It has to do with the timing of the project, the timing of the implementation of the stormwater management system.
Okay.
Um, they're proposing to use a a offsite reuse system to provide stormwater abstraction for the site and water quality treatment for the site. Um, but that project won't happen until twenty twenty five with full implementation by late in twenty twenty six. Because it's not happening within in the term of the permit as part of this project, they need to ask for the variant. Okay. Um, similar to last time, um, we talk about when the timing of things be roughly twelve months, be possibly twelve months by the time this project's done before the reuse system is up and operational. Um, in the interim, there's an existing stormwater pond at that intersection of Highway Five and Market Boulevard that will provide stormwater treatment from runoff coming from the site. Um, I did late this afternoon pull up the district's P eight model of that pond to see how that pond is performing under existing conditions to get a sense for it. Um, it is currently, the model's predicting that it will remove about sixty-five percent of the total phosphorus getting to it and about eighty-five percent of the total suspended solids. So just short of meeting the the criteria, so this reuse system is needed to help them meet the criteria.
So do we actually have a number for this variance at all? Do we have anything that's a resolution or whatever for me to be able to refer to? Or would you like to state that for us?
It it is in the report.
It's in the report. Okay.
Page fourteen of sixteen.
Okay. Could you maybe just give us that so that we have something to go on?
It is referred to as just variance request number two.
Okay, variance request number two, thank you so much. Do I hear a motion to approve variance request number?
To move variance request number two of, for the permit relating to the permit twenty twenty four dash zero twenty three.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. All right, any questions, comments?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Did I understand Mr. Sobiak correctly that the current stormwater is the, we're not meeting the stormwater requirements or the phosphorus removal or the solids removal requirements currently?
The existing regional pond, um, it provides an eighty-five percent TSS reduction total suspended solids. Um, but that pond was built in the area developed well before the regulatory program was in place.
Well, I I understand that, okay, but we're asking for an exception of variance for a period of time. So we're, it's not meeting our requirements. If we were to grant somebody a permit today, this would not meet the requirements, is that correct?
That's correct.
For a period of about.
About twelve months.
About twelve months. Yes, Manager Crafton.
Did you figure out how many millions of gallons we're saving through the water reuse? Is that not coming out of groundwater?
Um, uh, President Peterson, Managers, I I do not have those figures. Well, I, we're looking at thirty to seventy thousand gallons per day.
That's a lot.
Um, so I do have those in front of me, luckily enough, but um, maybe some additional context too on on why we elected to to go this route. So similar to um, the other variance, this was a strategic choice by the city of Chan Hassen. We we chose to do something big here. Um, we, we looked into trying to meet the district's rules and improve stormwater with systems that would be designed onsite. Um, you know, smaller infiltration galleries underneath parking lots and things like that, right? Um, those things pale in comparison to what we are proposing to build. Like there are tangible benefits to not only the reduction of water that we're using for irrigation that we're saving and improving, you know, water supply to our local aquifers, but just the amount of infiltration that can be completed with this regional BMP system. So with all those benefits, we are, we're, we are asking for this variance in time because at the end of the day, the system that we're going to build is going to be installed and maintained for many years. And the long-term benefit of building this regional BMP vastly outweighs that of trying to go through a different approach. Um, and I, that's just why we're trying to do that here. So um, I guess, sorry, I'll I'll yield.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
So I have a a follow-up, did, do we, as part of this, do we have any financial assurances that the reuse system, et cetera, et cetera, it's being delayed is, you know, we have any financial assurances that it's going to get done if the city doesn't do it?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, as as a public entity, the district does not require a financial security to be provided. Um, what we, what we are recommending though is that similar to last, last time, that if for some reason this reuse system isn't constructed, that the city come back to the district with an alternative stormwater management plan to demonstrate compliance.
Thank you, Engineer Sobiak. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, so where do we have a resolution that incorporates these requirements? Or this statement by Mr. Sobiak about coming back, I mean, just saying that it is, doesn't make it so.
Months, right, correct? It was in last month, I believe.
President Peterson, Manager Cook, um, it is in this permit report.
Okay.
Um, at the end of the discussion of variance number two, I believe it's on page fourteen of sixteen. And I've also have it up on the screen here as well.
Great.
But we, but we don't have a resolution drafted, right, that incorporates that? That incorporates that specifically.
It does not specifically incorporate that. Uh, we leave it to the managers to make the decision if you want to incorporate that. With an approval or not.
Well, Madam Chair. Do we have a resolution before us yet?
Yes, we do.
And I move to amend that resolution to incorporate the, uh, discussion of the requirements regarding the completion. Of the groundwater reuse and the requirement to, if it's not happened, to apply for a permit for continued. Operations.
You'll accept that, Manager Crafton? Thank you.
I also accept that.
Whoever.
Revision.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Ziegler. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, believe we're ready for the vote on the second variance.
Invariance number two, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now we're to the final permit. Which is 2024 dash zero two three for the Chanhassen Civic Campus. Do I hear a motion?
Maybe Tom. Oh, otherwise I would like to make a motion that we approve permit 2024 dash zero 23.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Manager Duval.
Manager, Manager, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, I move a friendly amendment that we adopt a resolution that's set forth on page one of the report.
Are you both okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I think we're ready for the vote.
On the permit, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much for coming. We look forward to seeing the awesome system, everything you're going to be putting in. I went by today, I saw all of the construction stuff sort of happening and thought, it's going to do it. You're going to do it. Have fun. Okay, we are now. Onto discussion items. So I believe the first thing is to talk a little bit about the League of Minnesota Cities, um, insurance updates.
President Peterson, Managers, uh, the memo is before you. I don't really have much to add about it. There aren't many, uh, changes, a few increases, a few decreases. I'm not recommending we do anything different with our insurance and continue through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, well, first of all, it would be nice to see a chart of coverages and costs to look at, but the, the. The real point is, I didn't understand the last paragraphs under property slash casualty rates. That was confusing to me, but then again, you know, I'm not the smartest turnip. Uh, says rates will decrease in average of 0.75%. In total for entities. But then there was, then there's this list. And I wasn't sure how you got to 0.75 when. Um, there's some decreases and some increase. So, uh, you know. I would appreciate, at least in the future, getting a chart so I can see the relative changes and how it ends up affecting us.
President Peterson, Managers, that's what the link in the bottom of the sheet is for. Um, you could follow that link and go to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust and look at that.
Okay, that's great. That would be nice to. Correct us to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey.
Oh, excuse me, Madam Chair. Is, is that, is that directly related to us or is that just generally speaking?
President Peterson, Managers, that's, that's some of the difficulties in going straight, um. Into what our coverage changes because we, for instance, we don't run a liquor store. We don't have, uh, public safety. So they give a net. The, our, our rates are decreasing 3.75% or whatever it was, but not all of them apply to us. So it is in general, but you'll have to excise those things which. Like I stated, the liquor store and the public safety, which would not apply to us.
Well, can I suggest that we get a chart, uh, before we end up approving these changes, please?
President Peterson, Managers, I. It, it is what it is. It's what the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust policy is. I don't set their rates. I don't do their underwriting.
I didn't realize we have to approve something that's a decrease of 3.75%.
It's not before the.
Yeah, it's just a discussion item. Right. Right.
So we're not going to approve our insurance coverage?
We have already approved our insurance coverage. This is just us being notified of the decrease of 3.75%.
So we're just automatically going to, by magic, approving a change. That we don't have any, the specifics for. And who knows what questions that might rise if we actually see the specifics. Why is this so difficult?
Uh, I think this is more like just information, Manager Cook. It's not an examination of the insurance that we have in general. For the.
It's not information. It's, it's certainly not adequate information to make an intelligent. Uh, decision as to whether or not more questions should be asked. I would be assuming that the League of Cities probably already has it, the, uh, statement of charges and rates. Ready to send us. I get that from my insurance company.
President Peterson, Managers, again, I direct you to the link that is included in the document.
Is that, again, I asked, is that specific to us?
Please go look at it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Jeffrey. I am glad I'm going to be getting a recording. Of this and your most recent statement. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I believe we're on to the discussion of Larry Cook versus Riley Perk and Terrence Jeffrey. Uh, do we need to go into closed session?
Madam President, we would recommend that the board adopt a motion going into closed session. For the purposes of discussing, uh, the, that lawsuit. And the need for, uh, a privileged attorney client, uh, discussion of litigation strategy.
Do I have a motion? Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Uh, so I believe Dylan, you might need to, and are we staying put where we are or are we going to go into the other round?
No, you're working hard.
He's ready.
Put him into breakout room, yeah?
No, a roll call.
Okay, we need a motion, uh, we need a roll call first to go into closed session.
On the motion going to closed session, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
I'll abstain.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
Okay, I believe we are back in open session. And the next item is nine A, manager reports. Does anyone have a manager report?
It's something I.
Yes.
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up.
Manager Crafton.
Um. Okay. And I've mentioned a couple of these things to the administrator, but I haven't gotten any response. And so. And maybe it just wasn't. But, um. In my conversations with Dan Shaw at, um. Bowser, he works for Bowser and he does a lot of ecological programs like the lawns, the lagoons and other usement kinds of things where we're trying to get good conservation on land using native plants. Um, and I had, had an opportunity at the tribal state relations training to sit with him for a day. And I talked to him about the property that we're acquiring and. He was suggested that it, that they would be, he might be able to have a grad student come and do an ecological assessment of that property. And I would like to, um, make a motion, if that's appropriate. To direct, um, Administrator Jeffrey to pursue that. Um, I think it would be good to have an independent look at that. Um. In addition to the EHEP work. So I'm strongly in favor of us taking Dan Shaw up on that. Or at least. Exploring that opportunity to work with him to have a grad student come. Um, and do an ecological assessment of the property and get around to doing something. It would probably not be tough walk, is my understanding.
President Peterson, Manager Crafton, um. The reason I didn't pursue that is because wherever we get our funding for the restoration, they're going to want to do their own ecological assessment anyway. But I agree that it's. Even if we utilized another, um, group for that assessment. Having a connection to a grad student at the U of L may open up other opportunities. So. Yeah, I'd be happy to meet with him on site and, and have him.
But do we need to make a motion?
You made a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second it. Anybody have any questions or comments?
And it's for me to contact Dan Shaw.
Okay, so I think we're ready for a vote.
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
I believe this is out of order. I'm voting no.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Yeah, one more.
Carries four to one.
Okay, Manager Crafton have one more comp, one more, uh, question.
Um, so, um. Well, three of us know these two people, but they presented at the watershed, um, what, uh. Summit that I did in 2020, what, funny. Um, Dan and, um, or Dan, um. Grant and Don Breck writes. And so they are doing a soil health event on their property in July. And I believe it's July 16th and 17th. So I would like to ask that, um. Staff be allowed to attend that. There's, um, it's, he put on as part of a Minnesota Soil Health Coalition. Um. Membership that these two are founders of that program. Um, we would have to purchase a, a membership of 25 to maybe 40 bucks. Um. When I talked to, uh, the executive director of that group, he said a lot of the soil and water conservation districts. Have a membership and then they pay for a whole bunch of their staff to go to these, these events. Um, but I think it would be invaluable for our staff. I would like propose at least three people. Be allowed to attend and, and learn from that experience. Liz Forbes and, and Matt and I have done at one. And we, Archie Letta did that at a farm. And then, um. Tom and I were there when Gabe Brown came and we were on Tom Cotter's farm. And it's just an amazing experience. You just don't get the same thing from reading something. So I really think it would be beneficial for our staff to attend that. Actually, I just put in General Mills for an award. Cause they're, of their commitment to regenerative ag, but they have. They have people, employees go from General Mills every year to attend the events there. So. I don't know. Do I need a motion or do I just make this as a suggestion or, but I would really like to see us. It, I think the tuition may be up to 300 bucks or something like that for a person.
Mr. Jeffries, would you like to comment?
I'm just looking it up. Uh, Field Day at Tom Cotter's Farm. Is that what you're?
This, this one's July of this year. That was.
That's in six days. So. Yeah, I, I.
This is Grant, at Grant and Don's farm. Break rights.
Yeah, with the work we're doing, I don't see any reason why it isn't, uh, germane.
Sounds good. So as long as I think that's an advisement there, I don't know, we really have to vote on their own.
I believe I, President Peterson, Managers, I believe I would, under the governance manual already have authorization to.
Right.
Okay. And I can contact Mark, the executive director and have him send you the information.
Yeah.
All right. Any other manager reports?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I need to obviously reiterate my prior concerns. We don't have an HR consultant, I believe. Um, the district has proven it needs one similarly, uh, in light of, uh. AI viruses, et cetera, et cetera. We also need an appropriate IT consultant. Which we don't have, um, particularly to assist with. Security and, uh, processes and operational procedures, you know, for IT. Uh, somebody to give us report on the status of our IT system and how we might improve it. And, uh. Also, uh, we continue to violate the open meeting law. And I have a number of data requests that have been outstanding for some time and I've been complied with. So I suggest that, uh, I know it probably passed already, but the, uh. It's at the administrative division or whatever it's called, uh, state of Minnesota has been giving. These seminars every once in a while regarding those laws, open meeting law, data practices act. I suggest that, uh, as staff and managers, uh, schedule. And try to attend those so they have appreciation for the requirements of both of those laws. And, uh, that, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other managers? All right. Onto the administrator report. Mr. Jeffrey.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Legal counsel? Nothing. All right. Then it looks like we are, are ready to adjourn. Yeah, I think you see the list of what's upcoming for topics and the event. On the 25th, uh, through the 27th. Which I think everybody has contacted you to let you know if they're coming.
Got three managers signed up.
Okay, sounds great.
You, I, uh. Manager Ziegler, Manager Duval and Managers Crafton are signed up. I thought you said you were going to be out of town. You told me you weren't going to be able to attend.
You are absolutely.
It's not delayed. If.
Like, no, no.
The managers want to attend, they're just can still sign you up.
No, okay. All right, Ben, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. Thank you, Manager Crafton. And a vote please.
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peters.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And we have done it by 10 o'clock. Thank you all very, very, very.